I need to ask everybody to have your masks on over your nose if you wish to remain in chambers. Masks need to be on over your nose if you wish to remain in the chambers. Okay, so next up we have CAA 20-127, An Appeal of the Planning and Zoning Commission's Approval of a Wireless Communication Facility at 601 North 27th Street. First up, we have Cody, I see you Cody on Zoom. And then we'll start with the appellant, Harry Lehman and Kathy Cook. Are you in person or online?
This is Kathy Cook, I'm online and my legal counsel had an emergency and was not able to make it tonight. So it will be just me.
I'm sorry, well, thank you for joining us remotely. Next up, we'll have the applicant, Melissa Regan. Melissa, also online? And then the Neighborhood Association of Record is the West End, Jason Durand. And then I have people that signed up in advance. In both, online, we'll start with people in the room. There are two people that signed up in the room that are not parties of record, so I just want to bring this up now. We've done our research, so if you disagree, then we'll need to have a distance conversation about it. Heather Chambers and David, is it Minor or Misner? Yeah. A party of record in an appeal means if you want to testify in an appeal, then you had to have testified in the first. Okay, all right, and you sir? Okay, so you're reading a letter under the name of a party of record, so we'll confirm he's a party of record and that's, that is okay, thank you. Yeah, okay, so Cody, let's go ahead and get started.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt, but I wonder if I could put something on the record before we start as a personal privilege. We've gotten some letters saying that city council has met with Verizon, but has refused to meet with advocates for regulating 5G. And I'd like to clear up any part that I have in that. I did in fact meet with a Verizon representative on August 31st, but it was not about 5G. He's a representative that lives and works in Spokane and was just hired as the new community relations person for them. Because of COVID and the difficulty that many of our nonprofits have been having, I had a meeting with him to see if there was any opportunity for community grants or community-based philanthropy that might help some of those nonprofits out of the organization that he runs within Verizon. We did not talk about 5G. On August 6th, however, I did meet with advocates who would prefer to see more regulation of 5G. I met with David DeHaas and two other advocates. And we discussed all kinds of issues that they believe are true around 5G and ways that they believe cities could regulate the, the location of that. It was before this appeal was filed, it was before I had any knowledge that this might be appealed. And so I would say it is, it was not ex parte communication concerning this particular application, it was broad communication around the issue in general. So I just wanted to clear up that yes, in fact, I have met with advocates and yes, in fact, I did meet with Verizon, but it was not around 5G, it was around community philanthropy. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. All right, Cody.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes, and we see your slides.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor, it's kind of a little, little different format again this evening, so I apologize for any trouble in advance. Madam Mayor, members of council, this item is an appeal of the Planning and Zoning Commission's Approval of a Wireless Communication Facility located at 601 North 27th Street, as you, as you noted. The commission essentially in approving the facility upheld the July approval of the installation by the planning staff. That approval did allow the installation of a 5G antenna on the street light pole, slightly modified as you can see here. As detailed in your packet, this kind of installation is administratively allowed. That being said, the decision has been appealed and I would like to just briefly respond to the grounds. First, the appellant suggests that we violated our own code and that a propagation study wasn't included in the original submittal. That is actually true, the applicant didn't originally include a propagation study. I would note though, this is a new technology, with these 5G antennas, we essentially at that point have, we effectively have no coverage throughout much of the city. The code is really based on traditional towers and not, and older technology and not this newer technology. That being said, as you know, there is an open record at the Planning and Zoning Commission and the applicant did provide subsequently a propagation study as you can see here. It's clear there is a gap in what is otherwise almost non-existent coverage in this area. The appellant also believes that that gap might only apply to phone or text coverage and not data. The city code or development code does not currently make that distinction. And so in summary, with this ground, if there was an error in that original administrative action and action, we do believe it was remedied through the Planning and Zoning Commission process. The next, next ground, the appellant believes we should be looking at environmental impacts as it relates to 5G installation. They, and they do contend that I believe you'll hear that we are not preempted by the FCC. We've looked at that carefully, actually, a number of times along with our own legal counsel and are confident that we are in fact preempted. And even if we're wrong, it is not a current standard of our development code. That NEPA review is a federal standard and again, not a local standard in our, in our development code. So if it's deficient, it's that through the federal system that it would need to be challenged. Regardless, the ground does not reflect an error in our local decision. Next, the appellant believes that additional written analysis to support the installation should have been required. It is true that there was minimal written information included in that original application, but again, our code really is based on some of that older technology and doesn't necessarily reflect 5G installations perfectly. It really, however, the code does promote installations precisely like the one is that it is approved proposed and was approved by the commission. However, like the propagation study, if there was any error in this regard, it was remedied at the Planning and Zoning Commission with an additional letter of explanation provided to the commission. Again, the purpose of that open record at the commission is to try and resolve any sort of discrepancies in, in that regard, and we do believe that, that occurred. The final ground, the appellant is also based on, on what the appellant believes is a diff, or appellant has a different interpretation of federal law. They believe there's some sort of, some distinction between phone, text and internet or broadband as it relates to telecommunications and suggests that that gives us the authority to consider again those environmental or health impacts. We've consulted with, with our own legal counsel and simply don't believe that to be the case. And again, like the other ground, even if proven true, it's not currently a requirement of city code and would not demonstrate an error in the decision that has occurred. So in, in closing, my comments, I want to be clear, not intended to downplay the appellant's concern. The fact is that we, we actually have a very, very narrow focus here and are quite limited in, in what we can actually consider. So based on that and the current standards of the code, we don't see where there's been an error and are recommending denial of this appeal this evening. I would note, just as a reminder, and the mayor touched on it, the testimony this evening is, is limited to parties of record in this case. Thank you.
Thank you, Cody. Any questions for Cody? No? Yeah, I'm sorry, right now, council's asking questions and then we'll hear from the appellant and applicant and then when, oh no, that's okay, I would, yeah, it wasn't clear, I was just, I was staring at the council members who were on the screen. But yeah, so this is just for council right now, that's okay. All right, it looks like there aren't, there aren't further questions, so we will now have the appellant join us from Zoom. Kathy?
Thank you, can I share my screen here? I've got just a few slides I wanted to show.
Great, thanks Kathy, and I, we've got it, but I just need to ask you to state your name and address for the record as you get going to.
Sure. Yes, Kathy Cook, address is 688 North 29th Street, Boise, Idaho, 83702. And so thank you, Mrs. Mayor and city council members for taking the time to hear our appeal this evening. I know that you've had an extraordinary year and I'm grateful for your time and consideration in this matter. I should state however, that I am very disappointed with the refusal to meet with the many citizens that have made countless requests to discuss this issue. I share the mayor's democratic views and visions of this great city and after enthusiastically voting for her, I'm extremely disappointed that neither her nor her staff is upholding due process for its constituents. So last month, I submitted a letter to each of you requesting a meeting about this topic and I received a canned response from the mayor stating, and I quote, "We know there are alarming things about 5G on the internet, we have seen them too," unquote. Personally, I find this statement to be very offensive and condescending. The canned response continued to say, "As per restrictions placed on all local governments in Idaho relating to installation of 5G by the Federal Communications Commission, the city may not consider the health impacts of radio frequency radiation when deciding whether to approve an application for a 5G tower." All of you have received this email and you will note that I did not mention anything about health impacts whatsoever. So either the letter was not read or the substantial fact and law that I did reference were simply dismissed. I did however, state relevant facts about the law and how the city has disregarded their own city development code. And I'm not here to discuss the alarming things that, you know, I've seen about 5G on the internet, but rather where the city has fallen short in its duties and how they failed to protect the public and to give you the basic legal facts that your colleagues have failed to understand. So I am an electromagnetic radiation specialist and I get my information from my instructors who are electrical engineers, licensed electricians, physicists, medical doctors and PhDs. I do not consult Google for the information I'm providing you with tonight. I should note here that the planning and zoning staff has admitted multiple times that they are not experts in radio frequency. This is important to note because your staff are drawing conclusions and making decisions without the necessary knowledge to do so. I should remind you that I am an expert in radio frequency and I assure you that the decisions from both your staff and legal counsel are not based in fact and law, but rather the heavily influenced wireless industry playbook that seeks to and has apparently succeeded in giving you false information so that they get to do whatever they choose without the nuisance of local control of which is entirely within your jurisdiction. With that understood, there's only three points that I need to discuss tonight. Number one is the approval of this application is in direct violation of Boise City Development Code as Mr. Riddle already has, has demonstrated. The application was approved without a propagation study. What's even more concerning is that the applicant did provide a so-called propagation study only after the approval of the application. It is critical for you to note that this so-called propagation study that was submitted has no value or substance whatsoever. This is not a propagation study. A propagation model means that a mathematical formulation for the characterization of radio wave propagation as a function of the frequency, distance and other conditions should be supplied. You will see that nowhere on this document is there any mathematical formulation. There is no information about when it was completed, the data, the data, the date, the instrumentation used or any qualifying information whatsoever. In fact, this document actually has no merit whatsoever as the intent of a propagation study is to determine that there is a significant gap in coverage of covered services only. Covered services per federal law 47 USC 253 and 332 C7 are for voice and text services only. It does not include, as per federal law, data, email, streaming, self-driving cars, telemedicine or any other service outside of the ability to make phone calls or send a text. This document does not provide any information whatsoever regarding this covered service, yet your planning and zoning staff has stated that this documentation was sufficient. So as Mr. Riddle implied, there is the difference between Title I and Title II when it comes to the FCC guidelines. And this is important to note. The planning and zoning staff has admitted that they do not know the difference between Title I and Title II. And so you should note that Title I services per federal law are about data streaming, email, telemedicine and other advanced technologies. They are not regulated by the FCC. 5G small cells are intended for, are not intended for phone calls, they're, they are intended for data. Title I services are not regulated by the FCC, only Title II is regulated by the FCC and Title II is about phone calls and texts. So if the wireless applicant cannot prove a significant gap in coverage for phone calls and texts, then this absolute, this, this application can absolutely be denied by the city. The onus is on the applicant to prove there is a gap in coverage. This so-called propagation study attempts a guess of coverage that may be provided by 5G technology, which as I have demonstrated is about data, not phone calls and texts. Okay, so the telecommunications industry would like all locality's, including the city of Boise, to believe that they have no power over local siting issues. This is not true, I am not talking about health effects. What I am talking about is the right that you have to deny an application based on the lack of required documentation like an actual propagation study and an excess of effective radiated power emissions from a facility. This WCF application was approved without any documentation whatsoever as to the specific technology that would be used. I'm gonna go through my slides here because I don't have enough time. There is no information about the effective radiated power in these slides whatsoever. As you will see in the document files, the antennas listed are TBD, meaning the antennas that they listed aren't even listed in the application documents, they are to be determined. Therefore, your staff is approving this technology without even knowing what the effective radiated power is. This is not in alignment with FCC guidelines. And this is true for about all 150 applications plus that have been approved to date. I have yet to see an application where the antennas are actually listed. This is a major, major liability for the city because these are being approved without any of the effective radiated power being known. So again, I want to remind the city of its liability in this. And in short, your staff and legal counsel have demonstrated that they do not have a solid understanding of, of the federal communication guidelines, nor are they experts in radio frequency, as we would not expect them to be. What we would expect however, is that you consult with independent experts free from the indoctrination that the industry has so easily imposed on you. If we, if you had responded even once to our numerous requests for information, we could have worked together to impart this information with you and your staff and to ensure a safe aesthetically pleasing and energy efficient community that we all want. Now that you have this information, I look forward to your reasonable enforcement of the law as pertaining to the WCF application submitted from now on. I also look forward to your approval of this appeal as it clearly did not meet Boise City Development Code and because no information regarding the effective radiated power is listed in this or any other WCF application, it does not meet FCC guidelines. I have expressed no matter of mere concern or any other non-substantive matter, but solely matters of substance of fact and law. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you Kathy, any questions for Ms. Cook? All right, next up, we will have the applicant. We, I have Melissa Regan, oh good, I didn't see you earlier, I'm glad you're here. Oh, but you were muted ma'am, you're muted, and will you give us your name and address for the record as you get going? Nope. No, you're unmuted, it might just mean that you have the wrong speaker tied to, to it right now. Oh, I saw that, let me ask the clerk if that's possible. Try now. No, we can't hear you yet. But you unmuted her phone? So your phone has been, you can hear us, I take it? Maybe not. Madam Mayor, she has to unmute.
All right, okay, there we go. Can y'all hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, my apologies, it's better on my audio than my computer system and to that end, I'll introduce myself and then I will turn off my video just because I also have the lag with the PowerPoint. But Melissa Regan appearing on behalf of the applicant Verizon Wireless Service Outside Council with Sherman and Howard, 633 17th Street, Suite 3000, Denver, Colorado. And I appreciate you, thank you, Madam Mayor and council members for allowing me to present to you this evening. I'm gonna stop my video and then if I can share my screen. So I will not spend a lot of time rehashing, we agree with the city staff's report and recommendation that the city council deny the appeal. We also submitted written arguments to the city council both on October 8th as our affirmative arguments as well as in response to appellant's written submission on October 15th, so those include several of our arguments and responses, including the legal, legal citations and the like that we'll be talking about during our presentation this evening. We are available to answer any questions that the city council may have. Jason Evans is also on behalf of Verizon Wireless Site Consultant who is available to answer any questions the city council may have. And Cody did an excellent job of kind of re-presenting the permit application process, so we won't spend time on that. I wanted to jump in and address some of the issues that the appellant has raised. But first, just want to recap the Boise Planning and Zoning Commission's written decision that they stated on the record that the grounds for appeal don't, do not demonstrate an error in the planning team's decision. I'm all certain some middle documents were initially missing, they have since been received and have been found to comply with the Boise City Code. And as Mr. Riddle informed the city council, that is a permitted application that is allowed to happen. The Planning and Zoning Commission can consider new evidence that wasn't previously in the record in its decision to uphold the permit issuance and deny the appeal. And as they stated, while the appellant has included grounds for the appeal, they had failed to demonstrate any error in the administrative decision and how the application does not comply with the minimum criteria established by the Boise City Code. And I think that's a really important point to consider here, is that that's what we're looking at here. We're looking at the code established by the Boise City Code, not the FCC or federal requirements. And so I want to frame this for you as to what the legal standard is for the city council's review of this matter. So the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision to deny the appeal is a presumptively valid decision and the city council must give deference to that decision. And it cannot grant an appeal unless it's committed a specific error. And those are four different errors which the appellant has not demonstrated that any of those errors exist in the record. We do not have any violation of constitutional state or city law. The Planning and Zoning Commission did not exceed its statutory authority and it also did not make any unlawful procedure decisions. And finally, its decision was not arbitrary or capricious without a rational basis. I do want to just spend a few minutes talking about why this site is needed and why Verizon is expanding the wireless network. And this is particularly important in the times we're living in right now with COVID. We have, 80% of all small businesses are using and supporting more small cell deployment. 80% of 911 calls are made from wireless devices. 90% of US households are using wireless services with almost 50%, 57% of households only having wireless service, not having a landline. And in today of the world of COVID-19 in particular, this really has brought to the forefront the importance of wireless services. As you'll see just from 2019 to 2020, we have a significant expansion of the types of products, applications and services that are used. I mean, I think one of the quotes that I've heard that has really exemplified the need for wireless services is that broadband really is the new necessary school supply. With COVID-19, we've got the work from home for so many businesses, the telemedicine services that we need to support and provide our wireless services for. We talked about capacity, that 5G is more of a capacity site than it is necessarily coverage site, coverage meaning the calls that you make from your phone. But this, this site itself is both a 4G and 5G site. So it's supporting the infrastructure that's already in existence of our 4G LTE network, which does provide coverage services as well as capacity. And so we just talk about how much capacity each of these sites can handle. And it only has a limited amount. Smartphones are taking up 50 times the amount of a network capacity as a standard phone. And so in order to meet our services, we've got to deploy in these areas. Just to provide a little bit more of an explanation on the propagation map that the appellant spent some time on, green means wireless service is good, yellow means wireless service needs to be improved, gray means wireless service needs to be bad. Now you heard the appellant mention that these propagation studies are not sufficient in order to meet the requirements of the Boise Code. Well, first, contrary to the representations by the appellant, coverage and capacity are both regulated by the FCC. It is not just a coverage issue. In fact, federal law preempts when dealing with wireless communication facilities that provide both voice and data services. In 2018, the FCC issued an order accelerating broadband and wireless services with a purpose of the order. And it brought data and capacity facilities under the umbrella of the Telecommunications Act, Section 332 C7, through the emphasis on co-mingled services is the term they used. And that provides both personal wireless services of coverage as well as mobile broadband internet access and capacity. And while Verizon does not, did not provide mathematical formulations used for these coverage maps and capacity maps, they certainly are underlying those formulas that the RF engineers were not required to provide that as part of the city code. And I'll note that the city council has to consider what is in the record before it. The appellant has not provided any propagation map that demonstrates there is not, there is sufficient coverage or capacity for this area, nor did they provide an expert or their own analysis. Verizon provided these maps, they complied with the city code and that's the evidence the city council has before it to consider. the city council has before it to consider tonight. I'll just state that we've met all of the legal requirements, as Mr. Riddle already stated, what the city code required. We provided the propagation maps and the written analysis while it was after the fact that is permitted under the Boise City Code to provide that as part of the open record. The Boise Planning and Zoning Department and the commission said that both of these were sufficient and that they demonstrated the information they needed to in order to comply with the code. The appellant mentioned that federal law does not require a significant gap in coverage, or that it requires a significant gap in coverage, not capacity. And that's actually incorrect. The FCC no longer applies the significant gap in coverage determined whether there was an effective prohibition of wireless services under the Telecommunications Act. Again, going back to the 2018 FCC order, which was just upheld by the Ninth Circuit, it states that the coverage gap-based approaches are not compatible with where the world we are today and the types of facilities that are being deployed to add network capacity. As Mr. Riddle mentioned, the code as it exists today really kind of still focuses on the macro facilities that we were looking at previously and hasn't been brought into play with the updated technologies and types of services that wireless providers are deploying these days. There was a lot of information in the appellant submissions that the Boise Code, they should have received NEPA reviews or additional RF information. To be clear, the Boise Code does not require that type of information. It's not one of the required documentations the applicant was required to produce. More importantly is that, under federal law, it really is preempted. So Congress has granted the FCC the authority to regulate RF admissions, and the proper procedure, if there's an issue with respect to the NEPA review or RF powers, is for the appellant to file a petition with the FCC. The Planning and Zoning Commission made that in the record before it, and the appellant, in fact, in this case, has filed a complaint with the FCC. They filed that proper procedure. Just kind of summarize again, we've talked about how this applies to voice and data. I won't rehash that point. But really importantly, kind of to put a bow around this, is that the Federal Telecommunications Act of Section 332 states that a local government, a jurisdiction, can't have the effect of prohibiting personal wireless services. And the Boise team's approval of this permit allows us to do so. It allows us to fill the coverage and capacity gaps in the surrounding areas, and importantly, give the residents and your emergency service providers, your schools, your work from home, the services that they so need in these times.
Ms. Regan, your time is up.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any questions for the applicant?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
One question for Ms. Regan, and this pertains to the difference between Title I and Title II that came up earlier. I understand 332(c)(7), and I understand its principle about comingled services and its prohibition against us from prohibiting comingled services. But my question for you is more about how the technology works. There's no such thing as analog cell service anymore. It's all digital. A telephone call, a text, it's all ones and zeros, and it's all data. And so I'm trying to get my head around the distinction between voice and text versus broadband data, when, as I understand it, it's all digital and it's all data. Can you just help me understand how the technology works and how that fits into Title I and Title II? Is she gone?
Oh, no. Whoops. Madam Mayor, it looks like she's not online anymore. Oh, no. She must not have heard me ask everybody if there were questions for the applicant, because she's no longer online.
Perhaps what we can do is if she returns for rebuttal, before she begins her rebuttal, I can just ask this question then, and then we can move into the rebuttal.
That makes sense. Will you let us know if she's back on? All right. Okay, so since the applicant is, wait. It looks like she's back on. Ms. Regan?
I am back on, yes. Sorry, I got disconnected after the presentation.
Hi, Ms. Regan.
Agent has a question for you.
I do. Quick question, I hope, about how the technology works and how that then fits into the Title I and Title II framework. And I want to preface it by saying that I do understand the 332(c)(7) rule about comingled services, and I do understand that it prohibits us from prohibiting them. And I got that part of your argument. But what I don't understand is how to think about the technology now, because in 2020, all telephone calls are digital, all texts are digital, which means they're all really ones and zeros sent in packets over the airwaves. And from that perspective, I'm trying to understand whether, at the technology level, whether there is any difference between voice and text and broadband services or data.
So it's a great question. It's a pretty complicated question, so I will do my best to answer it. But really, this is, there is still, it's not all text. It, we have two, as I mentioned, the facility serves two purposes. It serves the existing LTE 4G, which would not all be over the digital that you're talking about. And also, it depends on what type of phone the user has too, as well. So unless a user has the 5G phone, and that's the only phone that they're using, then that may be all digital in that capacity. But in most instances, most of us still have, you know, the smartphones that are not completely 5G, or a lot of us don't even have 5G capability from our existing smartphones. And so part of the purpose of this facility is to fill in the LTE 4G services and also to provide the 5G services.
Would you say that failure to approve this application would materially inhibit your client's ability to provide 4G services as well?
Yes. I mean, it is a dual site.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton?
Yes.
The appellant brought up something about the propagation study being insufficient. And in your presentation, you talked about how it was, and perhaps you went into details here, and I just perhaps missed it, and you could clarify it again. Who decides whether or not what the regulations are sufficient for a propagation study when you submit it to us?
So let me just make sure I understand your question, Councilmember Hallie Burton. When you say regulations, what are you referring to the city? Like the council regulations, what they would say a propagation study is, or?
Yeah, so we require you to submit a propagation study, and it was submitted later on, but it was determined that it was sufficient. But the appellant is saying that it's not sufficient. So I'm trying to figure out, how can you tell if a propagation study is sufficient or insufficient? Is it regulated federally? Is it regulated by our city? How do we determine whether the propagation study you submitted was enough?
So our propagation studies are, you know, Verizon has a team of thousands of RF, which radio frequency engineers. And they create these propagation maps from their very sophisticated systems and studies and the like. And we submit these types of propagation maps to jurisdictions across the country and are accepted. And in this case, the RF engineer for this region did their search ring, which is where do we need coverage and capacity, looking for the facility. And then as part of that, they create these propagation maps to say, look, we don't have coverage and capacity in this area, and therefore we need to build this facility. So this is the type of map that we use, you know, federal district court, all the way up and down, and then we provide it to the city. And the city, in its capacity, planning and zoning commissions often, you know, there's specialty expertise to review these maps to determine whether or not they're sufficient. I think, in particular, in this case, we've got a situation where there really isn't any capacity there, and that's what this map shows. So the facility is going to provide that. The other point I would make is that in many cases where we have appeals or the like, the appellant or whoever it may be will hire their own expert to come in and perform its own analysis to determine whether or not, and demonstrate if there's coverage or capacity. And that wasn't provided in this case. There are certainly the ability to do so here, and that the city could have asked. In certain instances, we've had it where the city could retain an independent expert if they don't feel like they have that expertise to make the evaluation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah, and just a quick follow-up. Was there anything different with the propagation study that you did here versus the ones that you typically do? Or is this the typical propagation study that you're doing at all of your locations?
This is the typical one.
All right, thank you.
Other questions? All right. It looks like we will move on now. If there is a neighborhood association... Yeah, because we've had the appellant and the applicant. The neighborhood association of record is the West End, maybe Jason Durand. All right, we thought it was unlikely that they would speak, but we had them listed just in case. Okay. With that, we will move into public testimony. If there are no further questions for staff before we do that.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton? If I could just ask maybe the same question to Cody about the propagation study. How do you determine whether this propagation study is sufficient or insufficient?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton, you know, in this case, initially with the administrative review, as I guess admitted or acknowledged, we didn't have a propagation study in issuing that original approval. With this 5G installation, we can actually visit the site, whether it be in person or through virtual, and see that there's no antenna in the area. These 5G antennas cast such a small radius that it's pretty apparent that there is no coverage. That being said, the applicant did supplement the application, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and that was clearly depicted graphically with that color illustration. And honestly, we're not experts in radio frequency and things like that, but based on the fact that there are no antennas in that immediate vicinity, it was pretty clear that that was enough.
And that's the typical propagation study that you would expect to receive on a project like this?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton, yes.
Thank you.
All right. We will move into the public hearing. So I'm going to start with the names on the list and then see who else is here, and then we'll go into those waiting online. First up, we have Hank Allen.
Hello.
Hi.
Madam Mayor, City Council, Hank Allen, 687 West Rush Court. So the propagation study, can I take this off?
No, with the new guidelines they're staying on.
You guys are kind of close. I guess your names Jimmy and Patrick. And I want to connect the dots for you. That propagation study is a 5G propagation study, right? So I'm a general contractor, kind of a simple guy, and I know that if I go in that area on my old cellphone that uses 4G, I have plenty of coverage. So there's plenty of cell coverage throughout all of Boise with a 4G coverage. So when Patrick asked the question, help me understand digital and what part of this is broadband, what part of it is telecommunications? The Verizon representative, she kind of is trying to split it there, but we do have 4G, and there's plenty of service in that area for 4G to make basic text and telecommunications. We can all talk on our cellphones, and we know that. Now, when it comes to 5G, which is going to be a broadband digital signal, of course, there's no reception there. It's a new technology, but we don't need it, right? We have, right now, for broadband, we're all wired, hardwired to our houses, for the most part, in the whole Treasure Valley. We have, what is it, CenturyLink and Old Cable One, right? So we have plenty of hardwired, safe broadband coverage. We don't need 5G, okay, which is a wireless broadband coverage. So the Verizon representative is kind of trying to split hairs on what Patrick is bringing up, that we need a different propagation study. It's incorrect, okay? So now let's ask, let's get a propagation study for 4G, basic Title II coverage, and you'll see there's plenty of service here. We don't need any more cell towers, okay? Now, for myself, the reason I'm so passionate about this is electromagnetic radiation makes me sick, right? Being here in the office or in this facility with Wi-Fi on, cell towers around, I will walk home, I'll have heart palpitations, and I'll be lethargic and feel like I have the flu for the next two days, okay? So I avoid personally, I avoid having Wi-Fi routers on in my house. We don't have a microwave oven, and I moved out into the country so I could avoid being around cell towers, so I'm not irradiated 24/7, okay? And by allowing 5G... And the cell towers to be close, coming in close to my house and irradiating me and my family 24/7 is not acceptable, because we already have hardwired broadband to the house. We do not need this. Make sure to ask her, I want to see a 4G propagation study. We all know, we have plenty of coverage. Don't listen to it, okay? I'm out of time. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Vivian Lockney or Lockery?
Thank you, Mayor and City Councilmembers. Vivian Lockery, 2211 North 19th Street. A Boise resident of 27 years, public health scientist and medical professional. And from that background, I make my testimony. I attest and affirm the following statements are true, accurate, and within my personal knowledge. I spoke to planning and zoning about my...
Great. That way, we can make sure that everybody online hears you.
I spoke to planning and zoning about public safety, and I want to talk to you about public safety, because current city approvals for these WTFs or WCFs, wireless communication facilities, the FCC refers to them as WTFs, aka small cells, constructed in the public rights away as close to 30 inches per our city development code, do not provide even the most basic public safety. Now, Ms. Regan spoke to you. She brought up numerous points about this 2018 FCC order. What she didn't tell you was that in 2019, August of 2019, significant portions of that order were vacated by the D.C. Circuit Court, okay? So I'm going to tell you about that. It was decided that FCC's characterization of the deregulation of WTFs as consistent with its longstanding policy was not logical and rational. Why? Because the FCC mischaracterized the scale, size, and footprint of the anticipated nationwide deployment of the 800,000-unit network of WTFs. Also decided, such WTFs are crucially different from the consumer signal boosters and Wi-Fi routers to which the FCC compares them. Also decided, it's impossible on this record to credit the claim that WTF deregulation will leave little or no environmental impact. Also decided, the FCC fails to justify its conclusion that WTFs as a class or by nature, their nature are inherently unlikely to trigger potential significant environmental impacts. So what I want you to know about the D.C. Circuit Court is, it is esteemed as superseding and not part of the 11 other district courts. This is just something I learned, so I thought, maybe it's not common knowledge. A court subsidiary solely to the US Supreme Court, and of equivalent way, which was interesting for me to find out, in the absence of an appeal. And in this case, there is no appeal. Fifteen states have taken measures to protect their citizens from wireless radiation. Several municipalities have passed ordinances that restrict the buildout of WTFs. And time does not allow me to provide examples, but none of these protective measures would be achievable if these municipalities were diluted, as the city of Boise, and I don't mean to be demeaning, in thinking that to take additional action would be to circumvent federal law. Ms. Regan?
I gave you, I tried to give one or two sentences after the time is up, so I've... Ma'am, I gave you, I tried to give one or two sentences after the time is up, so I've, your time's up.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. And then Carla Kyle.
My name is Carla Kyle, 3508 West Cootney Street. Under this permit, the placement of a small wireless communication facility will go into a residential neighborhood in front of someone's house. A recent permit response from Verizon attorney Mr. LeChance, this was like two weeks ago, to the FCC states, Verizon maintains a proposed facility will fully comply with Commission radio frequency emission rules. Although emissions for the proposed facility may be well below the FCC's general population limits at ground level, Mr. LeChance reports that the emissions extending six feet out to two feet below the antennas will exceed the general population limits for radiation exposure. Mr. LeChance states that because the RFE analysis assumes maximum ERP affected radiative power, the complainant's concern about exceeding expectations is unfounded, our response. Assumption is but conjecture and holds no substance or fact. Your city attorney should know this. A manufacturer specification of the proposed comscope antenna with electrical watt and gain rates for each antenna port will confirm substance and facts. Only at that time will compliance with SEC 46 CFR 11307 be verified. Proposed mitigation to include a warning sign placed on the pole and a notice letter sent to the pole owner are inadequate safeguards for protection of human exposure to levels of radio frequency in excess of the limits. Once again, Verizon attorneys have used language that circumvents the actual problem of the potential of effective radiative power and the microwave radiation being emitted. Until the city of Boise understands that no one is looking out for its residents' best interests, this means you, me, and everyone in this room. Then these small wireless towers continue to be deployed without knowledge of the affected radiative power or microwave radiation saturating our front yards and streets. You simply do not know what's being put out in terms of microwave radiation by the very fact that this permit and hundreds of other permits approved in Boise have no documentation of antennas and canisters, the fixtures, that will be put on the tower. I ask you, where is your due diligence in regards to the safety of residents in our neighborhoods? I'm asking the Boise City Council and Mayor McLean to do your job, educate yourselves, protect me, my family, my neighbors, and yourselves as you update and amend and put in place a better ordinance and city code surrounding 4G, 5G infrastructure. If this is not your job, whose is it? Until you do this, I ask you to uphold this appeal for the small cell tower to be deployed in front of someone's home due to lack of city code. So I had a question for Corey Riddle, Cody Riddle, can I ask?
You can put it into the record, and he might be able to reflect it. You've got just a tiny bit.
Yeah, and I'm wondering how many pages of city code you're referring to. As far as I noticed on your website, there was only two pages of city code surrounding the parameters on these 4G, 5G structures. There is not enough code. And again, I'm asking you, please, do your own research, listen to everything we have to bring fact and law to you. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. I'm gonna, we're all gonna have to not clap. We just ask people just not to react for or against things. We stay orderly, and we can move through this more easily, but thank you. So that's the last, I know that some of you came in after the signup sheet was brought in, so that's the last person I have on the list. So now we're just going to take people one by one, but first I want to see if. Oh, no, no. That's what, ma'am, please. I was about to say, I'm going to go through the list to see if anybody, and I forgot, sir, yes, because I marked him as not being here. If anybody that signed up in advance that we put online is actually here. So then I'll do that next, and then we'll go through everybody else, and then to online. So yes, so Mr. Misner for Brandon, yeah, come on up.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yeah. Nice to see you all, Mayor and councilmen. I'm here for Brandon Thompson. And he has a letter that he's written, and I'm going to read that letter to you.
And do you have his address by chance?
You know, I don't.
That's all right.
He's, he's, lives in Boise.
Yeah, that's okay.
He works for power engineers.
All right, and that's fine. If you had it, I was just going to have you read it with his name, but we've got it somewhere.
Unless it's in this text here somewhere.
Don't worry about it.
Okay, anyway, here's a letter. Dear Councilmembers, I attest and affirm that the following statements are true, accurate, and within my personal knowledge. My name is Brandon Thompson. I hold degrees in electrical engineering, physics, mathematics, and have practiced as a professional electrical engineer for over 22 years, thus thereby provide expert testimony on fiber optics and wireless equipment. I've been a resident of Boise for over 12 years, and my family has held property and homes in Idaho for over 70 years. For fast internet, local governments can choose everything from the best engineering to the worst. Because you have not sought out experts, you've been tricked into succumbing to the worst engineering. The worst really shouldn't be called a service, as in many ways, it's a disservice. For the fastest, most reliable, secure, and non-hackable, safe, energy-efficient internet, you would choose fiber optics to the premises, FFTP. This directs the signal to glass fiber where the data will literally propagate at the speed of light. You cannot get faster than that. For data security, you need fiber rather than releasing data into the atmosphere where the signal can be picked up by just about anyone. No one can tap into the data in a fiber optic cable where they, where they, to try, the glass would break and the signal would be lost. It's essentially impossible to hack and useless to try. Fiber is impervious to terrorism and absolutely necessary for national, state, and local security. All broadband requires starting the signal with fiber optic cable. This cable requires almost zero electrical energy, so it is super conservative, non-wasteful, and efficient. By contrast, if you take the fiber optic signal and transform it into a wireless, you've got to use, you've got use and waste, and you waste more electricity, which you have to transform into pulse-modulated microwave radiation. It's a huge burden with enormous data to carry, but slower speed with an atmosphere whose water and OH molecules, in addition to living tissues in trees and any human and animals bodies in between, optimally absorb and impede the radiation. That means you've got to, to up the power, use more electricity to get the signal through. You've also got the burden of the 4G LTE tracking of every wireless device. The system needs to know 24/7 where each device is. And then you've got to have 5G beam forming to focus the radiation on that device with a high concentration of radiation on the user and more so on anyone in between. This is not only inefficient, it makes the signal vulnerable to weather changes and moving objects within the beam, which can break up the signal. I still got like two more paragraphs here.
You can, no, what I'm going to suggest is that you, if he wants to have it all on the record.
Can we just leave it with you?
Yeah, you can leave it with us. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Should I just leave it?
Yeah, I want you to leave it there. That's good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So one person signed up in advance, Anne Hike. Is that you, ma'am? Yeah, come on up. And then I'll just kind of start over here and move this way for people, to make sure that people want to testify. And, and you, and because some of you, we don't have your names, we weren't able to confirm that you were parties of record. So if you're here in the, in the room and you hope to testify on this, you had to have testified at the first hearing, and that's what makes you a party of record, because this is an appeal. Go ahead.
I attest and affirm the following statements are true, accurate, and within my personal knowledge. My name is Dr. Anne Hike. I'm a medical doctor with almost 40 years of emergency room and family practice experience. I sent a letter 13 days ago. I referenced three sites on the internet of medical research. Did you look at any of these articles? Do you know how many research papers there are out there on pulse-modulated microwave radiation? There's over 20,000, and it shows harms in all species tested, including pets, farm animals, insects, bees, plants, and humans. It only took 10,000 research papers to eliminate asbestos and lead from our environment. So what type of medical problems are there? There's premature neurodegenerative diseases, including dementia, Alzheimer's, attention deficit, autism, insomnia, anxiety, and depression. Also, heart arrhythmias and infertility and cancer and biochemical disturbances. I've been evaluating petitions for the new wireless telecommunications facilities for the city of Boise, and I would like to donate my services to locate the next seven facilities. I recommend them, that we put them all in your front yards. And you're thinking, do we really need another facility? Many Boise residents are asking the same question as facilities are being erected in front of their homes. What is the power from the facilities? Guess what? It's a proprietary secret. There could be more effective radiative power coming from the 4G towers on the hills, and yet it could be 30 inches from your home. What if your child gets sick from this radiation? Will Verizon help with the medical bills? No, Verizon's company doesn't stand behind even one facility, but uses phony companies with no assets. When you sue for medical compensation, these phony companies will declare bankruptcy. And then who will pay? The city of Boise will. You are assuming the responsibility of harm here, and how many of these claims until the city of Boise is bankrupt? So as to your city motto, Boise for everyone, it's not for the electromagnetically sensitive like Hank back there or disabled people who use assistive devices that can be interfered with with a 5G. These devices include motorized wheelchairs, pacemakers, or hearing aids such as is needed by the hearing impaired child living next to this proposed facility. Powered by clean energy, these facilities can fall down, start on fire, need repairs, and are a huge energy drain. Shared prosperity across neighborhoods. Illnesses from 5Gs will cause an exodus of people with health issues. Real estate values will plummet.
Be second warning.
There will be a loss of the tax base in a bankrupted city from the legal actions of health harms. How does this create prosperity? Commitment to transparency and openness in government. Tell us how Boise's income has benefited from Verizon's facility erections. Tell us if any of you have personally benefited from the 5G rollout. Will you protect the people who elected you or the companies that have no personal stake in our lives, our prosperity, and our community? Stand up and protect us like you promised. I've expressed no matter of mayor concern, but solely matters of substance, fact, and law.
Time's up, thank you. Okay, did anybody else sign up? That's here tonight, sign up in advance, so to sign up for online, because I'll take you first. Okay, nope, you've testified, you said. Yes. Okay. Madam Mayor, Barbara is online. Oh, but we've got Barbara online.
There's a Barb here.
Yeah, she's here. We're going to go through folks in the room, and then we'll call you back.
All right, thank you.
Blue Jacket, Orange Trim, are you? Yellow Hat? Nope, okay. Nope. So you were planning on talking for Barb. Do you want to speak for yourself? Um, yeah, I'm just, I want to go through the room so people can leave if they want to leave. Are you, that's what I have to ask. Were you a party of record? Okay, and you, ma'am? Nope, nope. Okay, we've got everybody in the room. And just to clarify, if any of you sent emails, not just generally about 5G, but about this specific application before the September 14th meeting, for the September 14th meeting, then you are a party of record. Okay, we will go online now. So Barb, since you were ready so promptly, we'll go ahead and have you go. And then next up, I've got Paul Gee or Gee, and David DeHaas, if you'll just be ready.
Thank you very much. Barb Parsley, 10-900 West Wazee. I've worked as an entomologist who studies insects, in case somebody doesn't know what that is, for many years previously at the Denver Museum of Nature and Science, and presently for five years at a local orchard. I've done research on insects in many conferences and gone to many conferences and discussed research. I, I would like to address the, the frequency issues. You know, people have talked about them affecting people, and I just want you to know that there's some real research out there that it does affect people, but it also affects insects. The, the frequencies, for instance, we know that honeybees are really necessary for our existence. Well, it adversely affects the bee's behavior, the physiology, it drives colony collapse. It affects their motor activity to the comb. It makes bees aggressive, it decreases their colony strength. It causes difficulty for them to return to their hives. It creates problems in swarming. And there's other problems here, but what I'm just trying to show is that the frequencies really affect bees, insects, or actually any insect. We're dealing with the decrease in honeybee population already, and adding this frequency will only serve to increase this problem. There's also effects on trees. You know, you're the city of trees. Well, the Colorado, excuse my phone in the background. The Colorado research study has shown adverse effects on aspen and pine trees. They show that the trees that are tall and are affected by towers because they're tall enough have lesions on them, and the trees that are smaller do not until they grow up taller. The Telecommunications Acts of 1996 states that local and governmental entities may make use of the public right of way subject to regulatory objectives such as those relating to public safety and welfare. The above issues would disrupt our food chain, our chain, our plants, our trees, certainly affect our public safety and welfare. So I, I'm submitting to you that these frequencies have been shown and researched to affect animals and insects and trees. I'll leave the medical stuff to my previous speaker there. And I think that, that the Boise City Council is, is, or whoever is advising them to do this is being short-sighted in having this radiation on the people. I, that's just my, my, my opinion there. I think it's very dangerous. And I agree with the person that said fiber optics is the way to go. There's no problem with that. There's no reason why not to do fiber optics instead of doing something that's radiating through the air. And that is, any questions on that?
Thank, thank you, Barb, very much. Okay, do we have Paul Gee or Gee?
That would be Paul Gee. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, perfect. I'm at 688 North 29th Street, Boise, Idaho, 83702. Now, listen, I am an expert in measuring and mitigating pulsed data-modulated radio frequency electromagnetic microwave radiation, RFE MR, just like Kathy Cook, the appelleant. We're the only two experts before you. We were also there for the appeal. The, the applicant didn't bring any experts. The study, the city staff admitted they don't have any expertise. Hey, the city staff didn't do the basic due diligence of hiring a consultant who had expertise. You have no expertise at all from the other side to judge whether the propagation map is worth anything. You have three experts telling you it's worth nothing. The two of us, and Andrew Campanelli, he's the number one telecom attorney in the United States. He's seen the courtroom, unlike Ms. Reagan, who is a slick saleswoman, who passed the bar. I doubt she's ever seen a courtroom. He's won 5,000 cases against people like Verizon. And you know, I'm going to give you his quote exactly. So look, you're relying in the appeal on your attorney's assessment of the RF report. Your attorney has no RF expertise, full stop. That is fatal to the application, full stop. That's it. You can't accept it. The propagation with numbers is a typical effort from Verizon, and none of it is called probative evidence. No judge would accept it. There is no data to back up the funny colors or the numbers. It's all mumbo jumbo and made up, okay? This is what your code says. Quote, "A propagation study showing the location of existing fillies within the coverage area and radio frequency modeling, of which there was none, because there is no math. Modeling implies math, providing evidence as to why the WTF is needed at the chosen location." Keyword, needed, needed. Keyword, needed, needed, needed. It is not needed whatsoever, because we have absolute evidence. If you looked at the appeal, what did we do? We made phone calls all over the place. Yes, it is all about phone calls when you talk about the word coverage. You see, coverage is the one in your code. It's not capacity. It's coverage. Once again, facilities within the coverage area. Ding 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 ding, phone calls. We have the evidence. Fatal to the application. You must support the appeal. Here's what Andrew Campanelli says. Quote, "The applicant will come in with propagation maps, many of which are bogus like this one. Without the data behind the maps, the municipality does not know if the propagation map is worth the paper it is printed on. The truth is that no federal court would take a propagation map without verification. In short, comma, these maps are not probative evidence. You could have gotten verification by hiring an expert. Your city staff did not. Your city staff already admitted they are not experts. Your attorney is the one that approved the map. Come on, folks. This is a quasi judicial proceeding. You have to take care of what's in the record."
Thank you, sir.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Just a point of privilege or observation, Mr. Campanelli, the attorney is obviously not a party of record, and he did make statements, but I think all of us are going to be listening to the person who testified here and not to somebody who testified somewhere else.
Are you fucking kidding me?
Next up, we have David DeHaas.
Hello.
Yes, we hear you. Welcome.
Welcome. My name is David DeHaas, 1116 South Fifth of Boise, Idaho. If the city of Boise is to follow the written ordinance, this tower application must be denied. The application did not provide a legitimate propagation study. There are no specifications, no dry test cited, only colored map that any first grader could have drawn. This is not a valid propagation study. A real propagation study must be done independently with a cell phone and meters. In order for the tower to be built, there must be a gap in coverage. We know from our own study, there is no gap in coverage. I'm shocked your legal department has been very sloppy in processing these applications. Many are not signed. None have a propagation study. We pointed this out earlier. When we did, the applicant bought on a shaded map. The legal team of the city has failed you, the council, and the citizen. The city has a duty and a right to protect the private enjoyment of our property. There is no reason at all to have towers that radiate 25 million times more radiated power than it takes to make a cell phone call. We can get our data from our cable. Cable is faster than 5G and safer. This is bigger than COVID. Why can I say that? Well, at least with COVID, I can boost my immune system, mitigate my risk. This technology or unwanted pollution, I can't dodge it. I can't protect myself or my family. Where is Verizon's proof? They provided none, just colored maps. The falsehoods that Verizon have provided are numerous. I have sent you all data on the law, the real law, even the most recent ruling. You can and must properly regulate this technology. None of these towers should have been allowed to be turned on as they have not met the ordinance requirements. I have sent you the information of some of the 17,000 states that show these unwanted pollution radiates all the way through a baby's brain. It decreases melatonin levels, and as where the towers are located, those homeowners will experience a 20% decrease in property value. We should not be here at all tonight. Quite frankly, I'm very disappointed in the city's response to our request for a meeting that we asked for back in June. I have spoken to two of you. I'm thankful for that. We've not had a dialogue. Back in the day, over my 45 years in business, whenever I've had a problem with either planning and zoning department or something's came up, we sat down, we had a cup of tea, we met. In this case, I felt completely disenfranchised and shut out of the process. While Verizon gets to meet with the citizens and continue to bring data that's not sufficient at all, other cities are keeping this technology out of the neighborhoods and creating setbacks at 2,500 feet from residences. They have put a cap on power. Some cities have completely shut out 5G, including our own mountain home in Ammon, Idaho. And they're doing fiber optics to the premises. This is safe and faster speeds. Some cities like Eagle and Harrison, Idaho, have asked us to come in. They've allowed us one hour presentation. Harrison has asked us to give a whole day of a meeting to provide them with the information they need to make the decisions to properly regulate this. Further, who is providing the liability to protect the city for the health of damages? Lawsuits that are sure to come. There is no insurance that provides any city or entity with insurance against health effects from EMF. Why do you think Verizon uses independent contractors to apply for these applications and own these towers? It's called the shell game. Verizon mitigates liability by putting independent contractors in place of them. And this is outlined in their prospectus. There's not one insurance company in the entire world who will give you insurance to get the health effects of EMF. That should be raise the hackles on the back of your neck right now. Look, we're all in this together. We just want to get together and have this properly regulated and keep it out of our neighborhoods and keep us safe. Over the years.
Your time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So that was the last name I had on here. Are there other folks that are, oh, did you?
Madam Mayor, before we move on, I would, similarly to Council President Clegg, I'd like to address the accusation that we've met with Verizon representatives about 5G. I have never met with a Verizon representative regarding 5G and have actually met with citizens who were concerned about 5G. So I just wanted to kind of put that to bed.
All right. Thank you. I have nobody else signed up in advance. Are there people whose hands are raised on Zoom that I can call on?
Madam Mayor, I do have some that just raised their hand. I do need to check if she is a party of record.
And who is that?
It is Heidi Hassel, Mayor.
Okay. Heidi Hassel, we're just checking. You might be able to answer. We're just checking to see if you're a party of record, in which case we'll open up the line for you.
Madam Mayor, I do not see her as a party of record.
Okay.
I do have a Jason Evans, who is on a party of record, and he does have his hand raised.
Okay. I'm Jason Evans. And Jason, before you speak, I just want to explain to Heidi that this is an appeal, and so I'm not sure if you were on when I explained to the folks in the room. In order to testify on this tonight, you had to have testified at the first planning and zoning hearing. And so that's what we mean when we say that you were not a party of record. And our records indicate that you did not testify at that one. If you need to send a note to the clerk, I think you can do that through the chat. And we'll go ahead with the person who is a party of record, whose name I've already forgotten. I'm sorry.
Jason Evans.
Jason Evans.
Madam Mayor, council members, my name is Jason Evans, and I am here representing Verizon as well tonight as the real estate specialist, just more of being available to answer any questions that may have come up that Melissa didn't answer, or just any items that needed to be discussed.
And then that's, we'll have you, you and Melissa will have to work out who does rebuttal at the end of this.
Perfect. Thank you.
That's more appropriately had there.
Thank you.
Sure.
Madam Mayor, I don't see anyone else.
Okay, we don't have anybody else, so I'm going to give the city council an opportunity to ask additional questions of staff, if you'd like to do that before we move into rebuttals. Or do we do additional questions at the end? Oh, yeah, before, yep, as stated, before rebuttal. So if there's anything else, Cody's online. All right. And then can you remind me, James, of the order? Okay. So we will now move into, there's nobody else. That's right, I went through the room. And we'll now move into rebuttals. And first in the rebuttal order is the applicant. So someone from Verizon, did you all decide who was speaking? And rebuttals are five minutes long. Yes, we can unmute Melissa Regan on her phone again.
It was a 303 number.
Ms. Regan, we're not seeing your phone number, your phone. Typing, so we might be able to hear you.
Okay, great. There we go. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You've got five minutes for rebuttal.
Okay, thank you. I just, we heard a lot of testimony from people on record and applicant, or sorry, and the public about RF admissions and the cities needing to regulate RF admissions and the like. And I just want to direct the city council's attention first to its own code in that it does not require any RF admission information from the applicant but for the propagation map. And then second, I want to reference the federal telecommunications section, or federal telecommunications act, section 332(c)(7)(b) subsection four. No local government can regulate the placement of personal wireless facilities on the basis of effects of RF admissions to the extent that the facilities themselves comply with the FCC regulations concerning such admissions. And so that is going back to the idea that the federal government has provided the FCC with the authority to regulate this arena and that it preempts, the federal law preempts state and local regulation here. Verizon Wireless Facilities have to comply with the FCC regulations on RF admissions. If they don't do so, they don't get the license for the facility, and they cannot maintain their licenses for the facility. And so while we've heard a lot of information that really is not within the scope of what the city council can consider in deciding, making its decision, and as we stated, complaints related to whether or not the facility has the appropriate NEPA review, or it complies with the RF regulations are appropriately made to the FCC by petitioning complaint, which we've heard that the applicant and others have done so, and they referenced the response that has been provided by the Verizon attorney handling that matter. And I just, again, wanted to circle back to the propagation maps that was discussed extensively through the public comment and reiterate that these are the types of propagation maps that are provided to jurisdictions across the country. They're prepared by technically trained RF engineers in the company, and they use their mathematical formulas and datas to provide those propagation maps. And really, this comes kind of back to Verizon is not in the business of just building facilities to build facilities. Their cost, they have to spend money in order to do so. And so these RF engineers are looking at the coverage and capacity and deciding where they need to place facilities, and that's what this decision is made on. I'm happy to answer any further questions from city council, but again, we would recommend that the city council follow the staff's recommendations that the appeal be denied.
Thank you. All right. We will hear from the appellant. Kathy, are you doing the rebuttal as well?
Paul G. is going to do the rebuttal.
All right. Paul, we can, we can see your forehead, but not, not the rest of you. Okay. You're almost there. We can't hear you. You're, oh, there you go. Yep. And you're still muted.
No worries. So I'd like to share my screen if I can. Can I get, do that? Can you make me presenter?
And the things you'd like to share related to your rebuttal?
They absolutely are.
Great.
Madam Mayor, he is a presenter.
Oh, you're already presenter, so I think that if you hit share, it might work.
Hold on. I will do that. Share screen. Give me, don't start my time until I get my screen up, okay?
Right.
All right. There is a share right there. All right. So the best I can do for you now is try to teach you some of the things that the Verizon attorney was telling you that is just not true. So I'm trying to give you true facts here, because we have done really good work on this. Okay? So number one, the way that the FCC is looking at this, this is a, Professor Trevor Marshall made this comment to the FCC, June 17th of 2020. I just want to let you know that he's reporting that they're looking at this all wrong. Okay? Instead of asking how much power is safe to radiate from one of these cell towers, they should be asking how much power is needed to get the job done. So what you have to understand is when you get this close, you need very little power to get it done. The whole scale of this thing is off. So we have taken actual measurements that are in your public record, and this is how it goes. If you have a macro tower 2,500 feet away, by the time, and 200 feet in the air, the antennas, by the time it gets to houses, it's about .002 radiation units, and that equals five bars on a cell phone. Life is good. That's minus 85 dBm on their propagation maps. They would say that's good coverage. When you take a small cell, which they did admit tonight was 4G and 5G both, two sets of antennas, tonight they tell us that it's not specified in your file. Therefore, no one has the ability to do the effective radiated power calculations. That's another fatal error in the application that was approved. You have to specify exactly the antennas being used and the model numbers so people can do the analysis to figure out whether it's going to work or not. Okay? So what happens then is when you put one of those on, we have an example in Sacramento. And I could take you directly to the page if there's time, but essentially what it says is that when you put it in a second story bedroom, it's 50,000 radiation units. 50,000 is 25 million times higher than that needed for five bars on a cell phone. That is what you're doing. You're doing this without understanding a stitch of the technology. You're doing it with no expertise. You're doing, having hired no RF engineer. You are completely flying blind because you do not have the insurance. You have to understand that Lloyds of London, Swiss RE, Aon Best have excluded injury, illness, and death from RF wake wave radiation exposures from all of the liability coverage, all of it. You can't even get the insurance yourself. Neither can Verizon. That's because they understand how dangerous this is. They're in a little scam here, and you guys are the patsies. They're handing you the liability. They will clap their hands, walk away. You're not doing business with Big Verizon tonight. You're doing business with some kind of entity that you don't quite understand, and they don't have the assets to pay the claim. That's the bottom line. Hey, we heard about this telecommunications act. Let me tell you what goes on right here. Shall not unreasonably discriminate among providers of functionally equivalent services. That's it right there. And shall not prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting personal wireless services. That's it right there in the law. Those are both defined as wireless phone calls. There is no such idea of capacity in the law. It's only based on coverage, just as it is in your city code. All of this mumbo jumbo, oh, we need coverage, we need capacity, we need it all, we mush it together. It's all lie. And all you have to do is read the law and the plain language of the law to understand what we are talking about. Okay? So look, at the end of the day, you're listening to an attorney who's trying to sell you on something. What you want to do is really look at the law. Here it is, 47 U.S. Code 324, use of minimum power. This is the law right here. In all circumstances, all radio, that is licensed by the FCC, shall, hey, that's a, that's a must word. You don't have any option here. Shall use the minimum of power necessary to carry out the communication desired. We know the communication desired in the law. It is functionally equivalent services, which is defined in the conference report as personal wireless services competing one against the other. That's Verizon's phone calls against T-Mobile's phone calls versus AT&amp;T's phone calls. That's it. That's the truth. Okay? If you don't read the laws, you don't know what's going on. Let's talk about the FCC Order 18-133. They talked about that, and they said, oh, the FCC redefined everything. Hey, it doesn't work that way. The FCC can't rewrite law. In fact, that's what a recent federal court judge said. The FCC has no ability to rewrite the law. What they can do is state preferences, and that's all they did there. How do we know? FCC Attorney Scott Novick admitted it right there in front of the judges on February 10th of 2020. This is a list of preferences that does not wipe out your case law. The case law that matters here is whether or not there's a significant gap in coverage. We are the only ones that prove there is not. That is the data that you have before you. It has nothing to do with capacity whatsoever, nothing at all. And so at the end of the day, you're going to have to ask your.
Your time's up. All right. Are there questions? We did the questions before rebuttals. Just want to make sure that if council has anything else, otherwise I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. All right. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing and the matters properly before you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we deny appeal CAA 20-127. And if I get a second, I'll explain my reasoning.
Second. We have a motion and a second.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
A couple of things, kind of as administrative matters. First, nobody, nobody has advised us to make a certain decision here. We've received some legal advice from our city attorney. It has nothing to do with what decision we should make tonight, and nobody has instructed us to make any decision. Second, this is an appeal, so we have a standard that we have to apply, and there are arguments that were made under that standard. The first pertains to the propagation study, and the argument, I think, as best characterized The first pertains to the propagation study, and the argument, I think, as best characterized is that we did not comply with our own law by accepting an application that was deficient in the propagation study. First, because the propagation study was not attached with the application, and second, because in view of the appellant, the propagation study was inadequate. But we have an open record procedure, and a propagation study was attached, and given that procedure, it was attached pursuant to our law. So there's not an incorrect application of the law there. The second issue is the propagation study pertains to its adequacy. The argument, it was a fact-based argument. In the view of the appellant, the fact is that this propagation study is, is not sufficient. In the view of the respondent in this appeal, they argued the fact is that it is, based on their policy and practice in other jurisdictions and the type of propagation studies that they submit. There are arguments on both sides of that. The Planning and Zoning Commission resolved it one way, and there is a rational basis for its decision. So I don't think we can disturb that fact-based decision by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The second argument is that there is a NEPA review problem here. The NEPA is a federal standard. The National Environmental Policy Act is not something that we enforce in the first instance. That is for the federal system. There's an administrative and then a judicial procedure for that in the federal system. And I understand that the appellant's here are availing themselves of that, and that's, that's good, that's their right, but it's not, it's neither our job nor our proper function to be doing that. The third argument pertained to the written analysis, and that goes again to the propagation study issue. There was analysis attached. The argument is that it's inadequate, but that's a fact-based decision that the Planning and Zoning Commission made with a record that, that is rational for the conclusion it reached. At a higher level, the problem that I see here with all of these arguments is that we are subject to the Telecommunications Act of 1996, and that act provides that no state or local statute or regulation or other local legal requirement, i.e. our approval process, can prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting an entity from providing telecom services. We heard from Verizon today that denial of this application would have the effect of prohibiting by materially inhibiting, that's the language of the statute, provision of both 4G and 5G cellular telecom services. Our hands are tied, and it's not, it's, it really, the analysis doesn't go much beyond that. Congress has said that the city of Boise does not have authority to hinder deployment of telecom services in these ways. The final set of issues and arguments dealt with Title I and Title II, and the distinctions between voice-type communications and data-type communications. Challenging, it sounds like, from a technical perspective, but what we know under 332(c)(7) is that when those services are commingled, our hands are also tied. And again, they're tied by federal law. I don't have the power, we don't have the power, no city of the United States has the power to second-guess the United States Congress on an issue that it has the ability to regulate, and that's certainly true here. So for those reasons, because, because we have to follow the law and we have to respect the federal system, I would, you know, I acknowledge that there are challenges that the appellant can bring in federal court or through the federal administrative procedures, but that's the place for that. We, we can't do it here. So for those reasons, that's, those are the basis of my motion. Final thing I wanted to address is concern that I heard by email from a lot of constituents, including some people who testified here today, that, that we had met with Verizon, some of us allegedly had met with Verizon, but not with members of the public, and that this violated due process. And many of these emails demanded, in very strong terms, that I meet with them. They came in primarily this month and to some extent last month, and their concern was due process. But this appeal was brought to the Planning and Zoning Commission on July 15th, and it was brought, it was filed to come before us on September 23rd. As of those dates, we are sitting in an appeal-type role. It's improper, and due process requires that we not communicate about the substance of an appeal, particularly with the applicant. So due process requires that, that I not respond to those emails, and that my colleague not respond to those emails and engage in those communications too. And so I wanted to air that issue, that it's out of respect for the process and respect for, for your rights and everyone's rights, that we haven't been engaging in those types of ex parte communications with you. It's a matter of fairness. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I want to thank everyone who has reached out to us. I have had conversations with folks, I mean, from like last year about 5G and the various health concerns that everyone has. And when it comes to health concerns, you know, like, everyone's concerns are real to you, and I completely get that. I think that because this is an appeal, our options are really limited, but I think that what this appeal has also shown us is that we may have some insufficient city code around not only the deployment of 5G networks, but, you know, maybe certain types of infrastructure throughout our city. And so I would like to work with our planning and zoning staff to ensure that we are deploying infrastructure throughout our city that is safe and appropriate and gives our citizens the level of service that we want when it comes to technology, but that also ensures safety and is legal from a federal perspective. So thank you very much for coming out tonight. And though this may not, and definitely is not, the result that you are seeking tonight, we'll continue to work on it.
Go ahead. Yep.
Thank you. Councilmember Bajin talked about almost everything on my list. He certainly covered the legal issues, and I agree with his analysis of what the federal law says versus what our ability to regulate is in light of that federal law, which is pretty limited. We are allowed to regulate for aesthetics. We don't do that, I think, although that is not something anyone brought up today, certainly something that we should at least consider. Typically, we are allowed to regulate for public health. However, the federal rulings have tied our hands in that respect. I found it interesting that the main appellant made the case that she was not here to talk about public health, but nearly everyone else who testified, testified around health. I would not argue with the comments that we heard today. It's not really for me to make that judgment, given where we are in the regulatory landscape. It may well be that fiber optics is a better way to provide this kind of service than 5G. That is a case that will have to be made federally if it's to get anywhere, because that's the level at which it's been regulated today. It may well be that in the end, it will be ruled that fiber optics is a better way, or it may not be, I don't know. That's not for us today to determine. What's for us to determine today is whether or not, within the framework that we've been allowed to rule, we, the administrative decision and the planning and zoning decision on the appeal was ruled correctly. And as I said, I agree with Councilmember Bajin's analysis that it was ruled correctly, and therefore will support this motion. I also agree with Councilmember Woodings that this is an issue that's gonna be with us for a while, and there's certainly a few things we can do with our own ordinance to make sure that it's more clear, that it's easier for both sides to understand how to administer and/or argue against, and I'll be more than willing to work on that. In the meantime, I think that this is the correct decision, given the legal framework that we're working within.
Senator Mayor, Councilmember Halliburton. I don't know that there's anything that I can really add that hasn't already been said. I think if I'm sitting out there and I'm one of the people who testified tonight, it's probably feeling like my concerns are not heard or validated. And I've been there before as well, so I understand that. I do want it to be on the record, as other council members have done, in saying that I've never met with Verizon, not only for this reason, but for any reason, ever. And I certainly haven't met with anybody to talk about 5G in the last few months, but I have talked with people about 5G for the last couple of years, and earlier this year as well, before we heard any of this. I want to make sure that that's on record. I also want to make sure that people know that, like, yeah, we're reading your messages, every single one. And it is complicated on, on how to respond and how we can respond, and I'm sure that it feels like you're not heard right now. That's not the case. And I think that other council members already spoke to that.
All right. If there's nobody else, I will ask the clerk to call the roll. Thompson.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
Bajin.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Halliburton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. All right, that is the last item on the agenda, and thank you, everybody, for coming out today. If there's nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Madam Mayor, I move we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned. See you all, wait, I don't think we have a council meeting next week for Thanksgiving.
We don't.
So see you in December.
I guess that's okay.
Bye-bye.